Through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Evening, everyone. First on our agenda tonight is Mr. Westgate, the Governor Director, to talk about this engineering service.
Good evening. So as the board is aware, we have concluded the AC pipe project with the exception of a minor punch list, which will finish in the early spring. For all intents and purposes, the project is complete. The next phase of the project was to get the engineering of the remaining portion of the roadway work done during the winter time. That was our goal. So we're looking to engineer and permit full depth reclamation. We have some drainage work that needs to be completed and then the installation of granite curbing and cement sidewalk. This will match both 140 and Hartford Ave North where they connect. So that's why we're going with granite curb and cement, not to mention the longevity. These are sidewalks that connect to the schools. We want them to last a long time and we want to be able to keep them up correctly. This project is twofold because it includes the lower half of Fisk Ave as well. So we're not forgetting the section between Pleasant and 140 that is included. So I solicited quotes from three different companies, Beta, Time Bond, and Wright Pierce. Beta was a little tied up with a bunch of projects and really couldn't meet the timing constraints that we had requested. And I received quotes from both Time Bond and from Wright Pierce, which I have provided a copy for the board's perusal. My recommendation is to go with Wright Pierce for a couple of reasons. One, they are the cheaper of the two. And two, they just completed the AC water pipe main project that we had on Fisk. So they are extremely familiar with everything that's going on in that roadway. Probably why they came in a little cheaper and they do excellent work, not that Time Bond doesn't, they do excellent work as well. But my recommendation is that the board authorize the town manager to enter into a contract with Wright Pierce for the Fisk Ave project.
No, thank you, sir.
Questions, Mr. Westgate? Can I make a motion?
I move that the board vote to authorize the town manager to execute the contract with Wright Pierce Engineering for Engineering Services associated with reconstruction of this gap.
I second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Nance, action.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have the September 2024 IT grant.
And so I previously mentioned to the board that we have received a grant. However, checking back, I just notified the board of that. I'm going to let the board consider accepting that grant so we can then continue to partner with Mendon Upturn School District on this IT grant that we received. It will allow for the town as well as the school district to upgrade its main board meetings to facilitate hybrid meetings in a better form than what we're doing currently. Because y'all know it's here to stay. The governor extended hybrid through 2026 and realistically, they should have just taken away the debt because it's not.
Questions?
A lot of money. It's great.
It was $125,000?
Yes, $1.25,117.
I'll step, I'll take a motion.
I move that the board vote to accept the FY 2024 Community Compact IT Grant in the amount of $125,117 and to authorize the town manager to execute the grant documents as required by the town local messages.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the applicants for the Town Manager Act Review Committee. We have John Brennan, Robert Fleming, Richard Henderson, Stephen Racketon, and Alan Rosenfield.
Oh, God.
Is it Murelli, is everything okay?
Yeah, I'm fine. I'm sorry. Just got some bad news, but it's not that bad.
Mr. Westgate, you, Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Give us a little background on the whole thing.
Yes. I don't know where to begin. I authored the act back, forget how many years ago. It took two town meetings to pass, but it was enacted by, approved by the voters and then acted. As you know, I served in the board selection for many years. I was on the personnel board, FinCon, I've been on multiple boards as well as different committees, school committee, building committees for the high school and the memorial school, excuse me, amongst other things. So, yeah, I'm well aware of what the effects are on town government through the act.
Good, thank you. We have Mr. Racketon.
I had served these guys on the original Town Manager Act Review Committee, which I think was in 17, 2017, I think. Loving for punishment, give it again.
And Mr. Rosenfield?
Let's see, I've been a resident since 1987 at the, very fortunate, who've been appointed to various committees, much like Mr. Fleming, very fortunate to have served on the board's election, like the three of you. Most proud of in this community is along with Rick and I, creating, originating the Athletics Club that is now in its 26th year and is complete new leadership. And I was on the last committee. I wished that Dick to Jarden was able to make it or Elmo would still around because I enjoyed most was we had two of this election come before us on different occasions and I got to question them about their opinion about the town manager. I think we have an excellent town manager. I look forward to having some input if I am given the opportunity of serving again and asking for that one.
And Mr. Brennan?
Yes, can you do me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I just want to preface this by saying that the other candidates for the committee sound like they are eminently qualified based on their service and knowledge of the city. Just a little background about myself. I am a Vietnam era veteran and Desert Stormer veteran, a 35-year employee of Mass General Hospital as director for research and finance programs and emergency medicine. I've served on boards of trustees of large condominium associations in Boston. I've done volunteer work with the Greater Boston Food Bank and Habitat for Humanity. And I retired five years ago from Mass General Hospital. And so currently I am looking for opportunities to do some volunteer work as based on what I've just indicated. I have a lifelong history of volunteerism and this is my first foray into town government. So I'm really totally a babe in the woods on this, but I consider myself to fall into the category based on the committee report of a citizen petitioner. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And so, thank you.
And you?
Thank you.
Is Mr. Henderson available? Any questions?
I don't have any questions, no.
I have no questions. Could I add a motion to, if I can, may I apply?
Yes, I can make a motion. I'd like to just take moments and spread such esteemed company to recognize all the contributions that three of you have made over many decades. I've learned a lot from watching all of you and talking with all of you and your contributions to this town and you've been amazing legacy and it's a privilege to sit here with you today. So thank you for that service. I move that the board of selectmen vote to appoint John Brennan, Robert Fleming, Richard Henderson, Steve Racketon, and Alan Rosenfield to the Town Manager Act Review Committee.
I second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nance, action. All have to be sworn in by the town clerk. Mr. Brennan, you'll have to come into the town clerk's office to be sworn into the committee and we'll notify Mr. Henderson also to be sure everybody's. Thank you. I thank you for volunteering and thank you for all the issue.
I want to thank you. I'm not sure if I'm the youngest, but I know that it's good to be used to youth.
I did want to change the subject on that. Our first meeting, will a date be set for us? Because we don't have leadership until we organize.
What I can do is we can by email, just thank you, we'll identify a date and then we can find out how it works.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. I'd like to excuse myself from the call. I have another obligation, but I'll be in tomorrow.
Okay. Very much.
Take good care.
Take good night.
And can you public here, nothing with classification, one wouldn't pull a west here for level nine, except for. Will she be available tonight?
I don't like to. I reached out to get an update. We should, because we did continue the meeting.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Do we need to? Well, it does say procedural matter, it says 7:30, 7:14. Do we need to wait?
Technically, yes, we have to.
Well, yes.
Yeah.
So maybe the, I should stop. No? No, we won't that question.
Yeah.
We are a crew.
Let's do everything else.
Yeah, yeah. Town managers report.
Okay, so since it is just the very beginning of the year, we haven't had a department meeting, so can't really get an update yet until next week of what's going on with departments. For an agenda item later on in the meeting, spent a lot of time trying to buy more description to town projects and would like to be able to do is sort of uncover some of these into agenda updates since people may be curious about a number of things that fall within this list. Everything from like status of the orange barriers at Town Hall because we are waiting for the parkland as well as town parking lot redesign to have a number so we can actually go to the town and try to identify funding to do that work to, you know, working, Dennis is doing a great job, working with Mass Todd on trying to finalize punch lists for the Hartford Ave, Hockington Road tip project. There's a couple items that remain, a staircase for residents next to Duck and Donuts. There's some drainage issues on Hockington Road. And then I think there's just odds and ends, really.
Package stolen.
Exactly. We're down to, I think we're really down to one hand that we can count these things on compared to we really needed both hands, hand feet, keep track of things. Board already talked about Fisk Ave reconstruction with looking at some of the other items we're working on. I actually just came back from a capital subcommittee meeting with Mendon Upturn School District. And one of the things that they are discussing, and I'm going to make a copy of this for the board to provide you, they've identified a number of capital improvements that are needed at all four schools looking out over the next five years. It's a very comprehensive list, everything from replacing flooring and seating, security to roofs, to new athletic complexes, including a new school. Just as the meeting was getting good, that's when I had to leave. So authority wasn't intended, so I'll get an update. And I've asked Maureen for, we call it super tech, for copy of the capital plan document that was distributed during the meeting so I can pass it on to you. And I sort of want to get a better update from that meeting that I had to leave on really what some of the next steps are, because there was a natural grouping of different projects and quite frankly, everything that requires going in front of each town's finance committee, board of selectmen, and ultimately on the warrant, there's an amount of strategy that also is needed as far as packaging these things together, going to SBA for projects. So there's still a lot of work to see this laundry list of items that, you know, you're, you are up at $50 million range for all these projects over the next five years. So averaging $10 million for the capital projects, exactly, we accomplish that. And that's without a miss go to your school. So there's some significant discussions both towns are going to have to have. So one of the things we identified that we'll talk about later on priority listing is how do we grab all these things together? I think this is one piece between BBT capital projects, town capital projects, and then Mendon Upturn. That's a significant need for investment and that will be challenged in developing that strategy in this upcoming 2024.
Will they be having the project ready for 2024?
Um, right now, I don't know. They think that they will, but it may be one of these smaller projects. It could be coming forward with really a strategic improvements to the athletic complex. Could be coming up, and in January is the letter of intent for MSBA for roof system at that high school. So not only do you need to redo the roof, but also the HVACs. Roof is 27 years old and the HVACs are about that same age as well. You know, that's, that's coming in all said and done, about $10 million. So some of that is eligible for reimbursement to reduce that down. But there's just a lot of, lot of things out there. And one of the things we talked about is how do we divide up some of these? What, what kind of pressure and support can we ask from our legislative delegation for things that address security? Some of those things from an IT related standpoint that we can work together on. So it all is going to hit our wallet at some point, just how creative can we package these things to sort of offset.
So what is the SBA reimbursement? Time reviews?
Right now, Maureen and Spurjay are the business director of the district had identified that right now it's around hovering around 50%, 48, 52. Some of it depends on the work and some of it depends on what the state is. But there are some things that are, that are not, and how do we exactly, yeah, that's. So I'll have more of a broader town department and what's going on for the next meeting. Just whatever, if there's any materials, that's the committee meeting, like the sort of laundry list of all that stuff, just get a free view of that, the better.
Absolutely.
No, it's available somewhere, if you would just forward. Oh, no, that's, that's why I asked for Mike trying to copy so I can pass the file.
Anything under public comment? All right.
So I had a discussion with Joe and I was saying, Senator Grab's, I'm going to help him work on it because it's really pieces missing, words in, but I talked to Joe and I was thinking of working on tomorrow. The only question I had was the hearing we had a few weeks ago, question was asked three times, I'm dumping on the board. You asked a question first, it took so long, the people, that dog might ask a question twice, to begin the meeting, at the end of the meeting, and no one answered. And we have to get, we have to be on the ball with this. Now, I know Joe's learning it, I don't have a problem helping with it, you know. You know, my first time with dog hearing was like out of control, but we have a dog bite, it has to be pushed forward. You know, as soon, as soon as we get it in, we have to do it because police phone against the call, then I get the call and then I got to deal with people. And then deal with somebody getting bit by a dog, it's just chaos. So we need to figure out how, you know, straight up, I can get Joe on the right track with it and we'll be all on the same page all the time. I know it's new for him, we had that discussion downstairs, I'm going to help him out on it and see if we can get ourselves going the right way.
Am I correct, these are mandated times by the state? In other words, if a dog right at first, X happens, second bite, Y happens, and we have so many days.
Oh, the state, the state, as soon, as soon, they say as soon as possible, which we could have done it in November. Now, we didn't because you said too much, I didn't play, you know, but we, you know, it could have been, it sounded, I missed, but anyways, long story short, we need to just get, just addressed and dip it in the bud because they're looking at me, people look at me, they don't look at you guys. You know, they're asking what's taking us all, why, why, why? And I have to answer the question. So after the hearing, what I'm reading after the hearing is 10 days after it, so he submitted a letter, usually I submit the letter the next day, tell me how you write it up, I submit it to him, or hand deliver, I submit it, hand deliver, and they have 10 days from there. So now we're going to be, you're going to be a little furtive because today makes two weeks.
So I'm still a letter submit than happen.
Yeah, I used to do it the next day. It's, it's usually you have to submit the letter the next day. I hand deliver it, so we can't say he didn't get it, that's the cost, and you got a letter on it, you know.
Yeah, and part of this is, you know, and, and talking with Mike and then also, you know, realistically, as part of the last hearing, I was already thinking that there's things that we can make sure that we're all on the same page. And realistically, there is no reason why a draft letter can't be already prepared for the board to identify the two reasons for me to hit print and then we sign it that night. So I think there are opportunities to, to significantly change the turnaround and, you know, I don't, don't make saying it, but it's a good learning experience and, and know what we're going to change for next time.
Yep, like I said, I know my first dog hearing was, you know, you know, it's just, I know we got to do it, we have to do it now. Like I said, with people, they get bit, looking at me and I can't give them answers. Now, I'm almost like a fool, nobody else. And I don't know, usually first, second one on scene, you know. Like later they got bit, I was the first one on scene for that one. I was second on the second. Just because the crews are beating, because you have lights.
Thank you for offering to look at Joe tomorrow.
Yeah, I will.
Be a patience and.
Yeah, we'll get it ironed out.
Okay.
And off in there, you know, all right?
All right, thank you.
I, Joe, talk to you in a minute.
Awesome.
Minutes. Alan?
What was in that?
I had a couple of people, Laura, I had a couple of titles.
I am surprised. The one I really questioned was, some of them are simply just comments, which is fine. I highlighted them, filled them in, I'll hand you them. But there was one, let me find it. On the last, I think it was the December 5th hearing, on line 105, Laura have moves and then remember it have seconds it, so I don't think I can move in second, I don't think I can even end second. So, but I didn't know who did what, that's page, line 105, 106 on page three of the December 5th minutes. That was the big thing, other than that, it's just titles which I'll submit because you guys will be lovely when I do that.
We can.
But the other thing is the one on eight and one on nine, Brett Simon's motion to close the public hearing, Brett Simon's file. That to close it, close it, or is that to move it to continue, close it to continue?
No, I mean, realistically, that because the board voted to continue the hearing, that should have been it, 108 and 109 really should be deleted.
I'll give you my paper.
Okay. And then my recollection was that because Brett was sort of officiating as chair, I thought you moved and then Brett seconded.
That was kind of my memory, but. Get my shit and scratch all the way through. I'll hand it to you.
Okay.
That's fine. Do you have a chance to read something?
I sure did, yeah, was going to be.
Do you want to approve with the amended items or? I'll approve with the, they were just like, I said, some of them were just on the switch and still on the stage.
I don't know what's going with this.
Two words, it sounds like different meanings. But yeah, you're going to be so good at grabbing those synonyms, it, Brett's mon.
I know synonyms, I forgot. I learned about it in grade, but I've known it since then.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve with your, with the amendment. Okay, I make the motion, we approve the November 14th. I don't have the base survey. Seriously, the, of the December 5th meetings, meeting minutes with the amendments discussed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I, Nance, action. Joey, I was looking forward to it. All right. Let's see, seven is the Saturday night. We start. And whether I'm.
Here.
We're here. So. Will I choose myself?
So given that there's been no activity, no action, no response, no submissions and no attendance tonight, those that are interested, they'll reapply.
Where was it for me?
I thought it was going, last time we were here, it seemed pretty indifferent, like, oh, I don't have to be here, I can just do this through the building permit process, then why am I here? So my assumption is that that's why it's not here, because he's going to pursue the building process.
Yes, I know for, I have, I know he has to get approvals from the board of health before he can get his bills for that anyway. So, and he did appear before the board of health last month and we explained to him what we needed.
Yeah.
And my understanding is the engineers are going to discuss.
Yeah.
I, that we close the hearing on. In West River Road.
I second the motion, draw reaction to the board. So on this, because with the pending applications, so we don't deal with any sort of constructive approval, I'll draft a quick decision denying the applications or blocking submission by law. I'll bring that for the board for the next. Thank you.
Very good.
Team out of chair.
Okay, so now we have our priority projects.
Yeah.
So we first have an update on the job description for the EBS, the Director and Lord Nate. And we had any interviews or more applicants or?
We've had one round of interviews, we have one more tomorrow coming out of that. I anticipate bringing in finalists for that segment. Um, I anticipate, uh, bringing, um, and finalists for that segment.
Questions? Hey. So we have volunteer vetting training for pending E S S mission goals and job function pending. President roles check protocols, those are pending, and manager training on harassment complaint handling, investigations, and ADA is ongoing. Have you, um, have you started the training classes?
Uh, no, we're awaiting from, um, the program to, uh, through Maya, the person who we're on, we're awaiting confirmation as far as the scheduling to us.
So that would go along with the town floor, you know?
Yeah, because we wouldn't, we wouldn't be separating it out, uh, manager from them, or is it all would be dealt with together, because?
Uh, let's see, H F personnel training is all of that, the onshore training, is that with Maya or is that with?
Uh, that's with Maya, that's with M M A, we have the, uh, master's full managers, uh, uh, management association annual conference coming up, January, um, eighteenth through the nineteenth, and there's a bunch of H R, uh, related things that both of us.
Facilities. Nearly sent a playground orange fence, that's completed. Town hall yellow barriers.
So I, I missed that, it's basically is ongoing. This is, so a couple of these are, you almost want to sort of group together, um, because the barriers are tied to parking lot, which is tied to the parklet, um, and Dennis, Michael, and I, Michael, and Ellis, um, last month with B S H, uh, group beginning of December to get an updated cost estimate. So we can identify what we need to do, um, but also I've submitted a, uh, expression of interest application through, um, M V P. Um, uh, that's, uh, municipal vulnerability program, uh, looking at not only this area, but the park lot, parklet, the channel, um, that goes next to the rebuilding in our parking lot. And then Foster Street has a, almost like a town center, M V P program. Um, because they're all related, you deal with one thing, but then you're dealing with downstream impacts, you're dealing downstream impacts, then you're dealing gravel lot, capping that, and pedestrian. So some of these things are sort of grouped together, and they'll sort of be tied all together and, um, uh, yeah, short synopsis. Yes, so. Unless specifically by barriers, you want concrete instead of pillows and that.
I, I mean, anything is better than bright yellow construction, um, barriers, but that's not. So we have a parklet, we have a potential grid crossing, bridge crossing to Holy Angels, we have the new parking lot, and you're talking about the capping of like, what are we trying to, but like, my, my fear is that when we try to do too much, we do nothing. So if there are things that can be like, so I just wanna understand, like, you know, what the sort of sequence of events is to make sure that we're not just stuck in analysis paralysis, because we're like trying to do so much, it's the same reason, but then it was proven to decouple the Holy Angels sort of project from the Rustine project. It's like, the bigger these things get, the more, the more difficult they are to manage, we track out, and nothing gets done, so.
So, looking at the town parking, um, uh, the design that the consultant's working on accommodates both the parking lot redesign that was done a couple of years ago along with the parklet.
Yeah.
So that we can basically carve off only the parking lot to go forward as a.
Yeah.
The other, and, and make sure that the pedestrian connections that are necessary through the parking lot to get to the parklet.
Yeah.
Um, can be accommodated, so we don't end up, um.
Having to redo anything, right?
So, so the idea is to have the town hall parking as a standalone project.
Yeah.
Um, and cost that, so we can go ahead and do those things.
Got it.
The larger project as far as that parklet, um, that then starts that, raises some of the other issues that you're dealing with flood storage, the task you're dealing with, some of the, um, uh, the, uh, flying vulnerability that we could experience. Yeah, and I am pretty much got, pretty darn close to win this last storm, um, if, if your crews hadn't cleaned things out at the beginning. Um, so that would be a separate thing, that would be a separate thing. Separate, but for example, um, in Millbury's, yeah, there's a lot, if, if you've been there recently, there's been a lot of, um, work downtown, um, not only doing parking, but roadway landscaping, but also they redid their bench, that all started with an M V P program, that they got three million dollars to sort of start the drainage work, and that it implemented these things. We have the capability of either, and this is where the expression of interest, depending on what we get from feedback, if they say, you know what, this is too much, focus on this, we can then apply for M V P for component, and leaving that parking lot for ourselves to fund if we're dealing with other issues.
See, that's where you lost me.
What? Um, M V P, because it is the municipal vulnerability program.
Yeah.
It's a way that, it's a program that state has, uh, come up with to fund and mitigate, um, vulnerable areas to decline. So flooding, uh, drought, uh, fire.
Potential cash rush to get the state to give us funding or do some.
So the parklet is a good example, like, would we spend three hundred thousand dollars to, to construct a park? We may not, given some other needs, but that may be viewed as a eligible project under M V P, because it deals with flood storage capability, uh, task. And, but the parking lot, it could be wrapped together, or we just carve it up.
What, what parking lot?
This town hall parking, because you have drainage that then goes into that room.
Okay, so what we're gonna do, so you're putting together an M V P that includes F R I.
To get their feedback, because.
And we say they, that's the state.
The state, exactly.
Because of the flood, I mean, the state.
Correct, because if you just deal with one without being aware of attention impacts like they have.
Right.
Um, and that's where, through the month of January, this expression of interest is for the state to provide feedback.
Yeah, so how broad is the sort of scope of that M V P for the state? Right, that's, is it just a town?
Town center. Town center, you need to redevelop town centers to accommodate drainage, to put in low impact, uh, drainage, uh, facilities to, um, uh, improve stormwater quality runoff.
Yeah.
And help to revitalize the downtown.
So the, okay, so the thinking is that it doesn't make sense to do anything with the parking lot and the barriers or whatever, because we wanna get feedback from the state on the M V P first. Because if they come back and can give us funding of some sort, that may offset some of the costs with the parking lot, it may offset some of the design, the drainage, or what have you, snow storage, that we might do with the parking lot. So we don't wanna take any action sort of on any particular piece of capping the gravel lot or doing the parklet, or doing the parking until we get feedback from the state on the cost.
Right, and that feedback is gonna happen pretty quickly for the next month and a half, so it's really not delaying us. Because by the time we get numbers from B S E and you scrutinize.
Yeah.
We're pretty much a month and a half.
Yeah, I was confused, that makes sense.
We have a strong law on management program.
Yes, we do.
Now, is that kind of what you do, apply for M V P?
Very often they'll identify what, uh, mitigation regulations systems you have in place. Um, but for us, it's regulatory, yes, and monitoring and all that stuff. Um, versus, uh, we don't say annually fund two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the stormwater improvements outside of maybe repairing some catch basins.
Could, could the, does the downtown M V P include the dam, uh, by fin and feather? Um, upgrades and even dam removal projects have been funded to. Or damage can be gathered, but. And that's, so, one is or is not, oh, it's an eligible project, one type, but aren't we writing an M V P like, or? Um, I'm trying to see what the boundary with the bounds or the scope is for the M V P conversation with the state. Like, we obviously don't wanna throw everything in the sink in there, but I'm trying to see what are the bounds of that presently?
So when you're talking about as far as including the dam as part of like a redevelopment within the town center, what that could look like?
Was that?
Yes, I'm sort of asking what the current town center, like, I'm, I'm asking, and from your perspective, what's in, like, when you go to the state and say, hey, we're looking at the downtown redevelopment, we got a parking lot, we got a parklet, we got some pedestrian bridges, we got a gravel lot. Like, what are the things that, I just listed a bunch of them, is that it, or are there more things?
Oh, there's a lot more, more things that would be, uh, would be covered through the M V P program than just dealing with, um, what we're looking at specifically as related to, uh, the parklet, center, rock, uh, the gravel lot, pedestrian connection across the V F W. Those things that are immediately along this tributary company by town hall parking lot, um, as it dumps out into, um, the brook, um, by Rustine before then dump to Center Brook. Um, you know, there's, uh, everything from, uh, like I said, dam removal, there's, uh.
Who's having the conversations with the state?
So on a staff level, we got together to brainstorm a bunch of projects.
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, including open space acquisition, that's another thing. Use for M V P.
Yeah.
And because for expression of interest, which isn't an application yet, we can pick a bunch of things. Uh, the expression of interest was stated, that we were under this program to get the state's feedback. So maybe two years ago, when we started the whole.
So they're talking about an expression of interest to provide to the state.
A project concept to get their feedback.
Yeah.
On what are issues they may see, what are some hurdles, what may be our changes that could influence our ultimate application, which would be due in June.
It's almost like cheating, it's, we're gonna take the test, but before we take the test, we tell them what our answers are gonna be, and they tell us.
Yeah.
No, we don't like these.
Right, right, I, I, yeah, I, I, I'm, okay, yeah.
But that James project, that, 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 that nasty O T block.
I'm not certain on the logistics behind the data, I'd be starting from scratch with that. I will say, the ones that the town manager just brought up, there's one that's a little more important than I think most people realize, and that's the gravel lot. We always assume we're just capping the gravel lot, I want to remind the board that we're under a consent order, they call it a permit, an annual permit, but they charge us for it to be ongoing. But they've, they've already got us to agree that we're gonna cap that. And until we do it, they're gonna continue to charge us.
It's, it's about two thousand just a year for a month that we're charged for that. So that's part of, as, as you look at all these things coming together in the center, um, that's one of those items that, capping involves also, um, installing imperious, imperious pavement. Um, you have to be able to deal with that stormwater, you have to deal with some sort of mitigation of that stormwater, so it doesn't ride into the brook, that's a component that included in this M V P expression of interest to get feedback on. And part of the feedback is, what is, what is a strong application? We did this in the development of the mass work, to be products to apply for expression of interest to get feedback. And that's an important component, because, one, everyone parks over there now, but, you know, we do, we are paying every year, um.
I mean, that's, I was gonna say, I don't think that's really gonna be a driving factor.
No, if it was going to say, I would be on, on, down ten, but I hear you.
I have a question, the, um, you talked about the stormwater, the issues in the M V P, the fact that the town did, the town were flooded, you know, two weeks ago. Um, or whatever it was, whenever that storm was, does that weigh into the state's factor? That cook did water?
It was a roof issue.
Was it a roof issue?
Yeah, we have a, we actually have an expert coming out from Maya, should be here Thursday or Friday at the latest, to get up on the roof. But we suspect that when the driving wind came from an odd direction, and you had hurricane gusts without a lot of rain, it got underneath the flash on that whole side. And that's why we experienced what we did. It either got on the flash, or it got on the stone ice shield, either way, it got on the flash, so.
I just didn't know if that would add weight to the state and saying, hey, look, you know, you, if you're talking about an M V P to direct water, to control water, we had water, you know?
There was a structural issue through the roof.
I didn't know if it was coming down the hill so fast, I mean, it definitely wasn't, it was an unusual storm. There was water, where people never had water before.
No, but that's where, in an example, like, if you look at, uh, there up, up the edge of the parking lot now, and you see driftwood, it's basically accumulated some water that rose up, had that traveled into that, um, stone open. And would have had, um, a whole bunch of things, I mean, that's where the parking lot construction, you know, the parklet by itself is sort of a strong project, because you get that water, um, backing up, and obviously goes right into Sheriff, Treasure Police Office, um, there's nowhere.
To go, no. And the center of town, the entire town is the lowest point in town.
So, and, and there's a lot of fusion as far as, you know, you said it's part of the state tip project, they cambered it and found it went to the little tributary.
So it's, it's a stone culvert above to the middle of the road, and it transitions to an R C P reinforced concrete pipe. That shoots across the street all the way down to in front of Rustine Building. It actually cuts right across the front of their parking lot and dumps to the right-hand side opposite of the brewery of the bridge. That's all, so all that from there to all the way down there is underground.
So we have the parking lot, how do we divert the, I mean, purpose right there?
You have to do stormwater, because we're, we're within the regulated mapping of stormwater in the center of town. So we have to engineer that, that's not simply just painting black on one of these.
And we're also floodplain, and that's actually.
Right.
So there's a lot of road that worried, it made it easier just to daylight everything, we just have to draw a red jump and down.
I use that as an example, because I see that, in my experience, I know that that can run up some, some numbers, that can be costly. So if we have an opportunity to pull in revenues from grants or whatnot, I'm, I'm all for it then, rather than standing up on town meetings, saying, I need one point five million to kind of grab a lot.
Can we get a legislative?
Oh, yeah.
And we do, just kind of in that same vein, I know we talked last meeting about trying to delay the project. So we could get some of this plan and even the water and sewer rock down from Florida.
Did we talk about delaying the project? I want to be really clear about that.
I'm here, that, no, I was, I was.
Uh, the road, last time we talked, we talked about the state was seventy-five percent done and getting ready.
They're getting.
But we, we got a grant to pull the water and sewer down, down the hill, but they're, the timelines don't drop. The state flooded.
The tip project wouldn't be impacted, there was a separate mass highway project for milling and overlaying. Um, uh, just for the tip projects that ends, then going out to, uh, Hope Dale Town.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, they and that's where we'll, we'll be asking for some help, because, um, for the tip project, we have put in a request, uh, to having this T D C pipe removed, and they said no. It would add too much time and cost to the project. Um, but then if they wanna say, okay, well, that, um, milling overlay for that section, you're gonna ask where's, um, we're gonna remove from our project, it's like, we're, we're paying for two parts of our project that ordinarily you would be doing.
What's the reason for that?
That's, that needs to be communicated.
All set?
Thank you.
Yeah. On to the next. And that was.
Uh, community center H V A C. Completed.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Sand and swans, want, how much sand? Sand and swans, swans. How much sand?
So we went up and actually measured the entire area down to the water line and then. My high representative remembers, it's been a while since we replaced sand, but we have replaced sand there in the past. And it's only about a foot deep, which is probably why we don't get that long out of it. It would benefit if it was a little deeper than that. So we measured it out to come up with square yards, and we have a company coming out tomorrow to bring us um some samples and pricing on what we're looking at. I don't think it's gonna shock anybody. Uh, it's not five thousand dollars worth of sand, but I don't think, I don't think it's a hundred thousand sand needed.
And would you know, this is probably what you're telling me right now, but would it be, would they take out the existing dirt?
We will. And, and the, the thing is, the trickiest is, I, you can get some pretty fine sand, believe it or not. The problem with the stuff that's so fine is that it's subject to erosion from foot traffic, from wind and from rain. So you want something that's soft on the feet, but not so soft that it's gonna be gone in two years, and you're left with the grain and stuff.
Yeah, because I feel like that's what's there now. Absolutely. Whatever the soft stuff that was there has eroded and it's just this heavily, almost like sand.
But we'll have, we'll probably have an accurate place for that next week.
How many few could you ask that you come up?
Oh, you wouldn't speak that.
I think you'll leave that big.
I want to say it's.
Fifteen hundred?
I want to say it was five hundred cubic yards. That's what I think it was. But that was a foot deep, and I would recommend.
Right. And how do we get the swans? I noticed some wild, did we kidnap one? I'm pointing at.
Well, there was a, there was a project going on that where the, I think the technical name of that. That there is where there's a company that goes out and like gasifies early spring when they're laying the eggs and they rotate the eggs. When they do this, the swans don't return, and they've been doing this, I want to say this is gonna be either a second or thirds. I think it's a second.
I'm gonna look that up because it's clearly not working.
Well, or they, they said it takes about five to six years.
Okay.
Each year you seed the, the flock window until there are no more.
This should be.
Well, the flock is, I was in the cemetery today, they are extremely problematic with their ooze.
Well, that's a good news.
My staff, if they've noticed the difference in them, and they, my cemetery staff said that they're less of them, really, than they were two years ago.
There's, there's still.
No, smaller than anybody.
They must feed the ton because it's going up the.
Oh, they're, they're known for that. Oh, yeah, yeah.
The reason they stay is because people feed them. Now, if they'd stopped feeding that reason.
But, but you can't get the, the swans are, you can, you can buy. Second, um, right, they're a natural deterrent for the geese. You can buy them and they have like the wings, and so they don't fly away, but they can sort of protect them. That's the, they're, anyway. And they've done dogs, we've had dogs out there for at least one season. They brought these collies in and were sort of harassing the geese to annoy them, and they're doing the egg adling and then. Trying to get rid of those geese for a long time.
It shouldn't be flying, so not.
They're not bacteria geese. Yeah, they're not. That's people feeding.
They're, no, they're, they're a different type of geese. They're not Canadian geese. They, they stay right where they're born year round. They don't like.
Big, I think of those big chickens.
They're like big rats.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, if you clip their wings, that's a massacre.
I do know that, yeah, for the swans.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't get the geese once we want them flying.
Oh, yeah. We should be so lucky. Okay, status of holy angels, building rehabilitation program. Has anybody responded to that letter you sent out?
Uh, we haven't uh published the expression of interest document yet. That's gonna be uh reviewed uh towards the end of the month with the E D C, and then once we get their uh blessing, um, our intent is to then publish that um so that we can get some responses in. And because it's really asking for more creative responses and it's not a technical response, um, you know, I think we're, I'm hopeful that we will get at least very good concepts to then have community discussions and move forward. At the same.
Now, go ahead.
At the same time, um, uh, we're working to finalize um consulting uh documentation for selecting consultant to um uh do not only the environmental uh resource area delineation. Um, that would be funded through that development, um, but then Mike is working on specifications uh through another uh brand uh to look at for the, what would be needed as for the, the building for some sort of reuse.
I'm still opening up where, waiting till spring to finish the outside, to the outside of the resting home.
Correct. That was something that Dennis and John Johnston all together, uh those posts, and that was recognized that uh by those uh, uh, the, the firm that provided the quote, that, that's, that's a made timeframe.
So, they're dead, the resting wheel, what's in the shed? No.
Bags, trash bags. Bags.
So the only reason why I had pending was.
Yellow bags.
Was, um, uh, I think, I think it was discussed, let's move it to the D P W. Dennis is like, well, if you tell me to move it to D P W, we'll move it to D P W. The last thing was, have we told Board to help?
That they'll have, they'll have to go. They're the ones that don't.
Well, Paul's team, I think the grabs brings them home, so. Um, I think that would only be the logistical question is.
Sure.
And one of the guys, they buy somewhere, drop a case off.
At town.
I, I don't, yeah, I don't really know. I, that's like Diane and Paul's thing, I don't.
Paul brings them, Paul brings them over here to the building.
Okay.
As, as they're needed. My staff actually assists Paul stacking when the truck gets, because they just did it last week. The truck came by and dropped off the pallets. My staff goes over and assists in putting it all in there, because it's not, it's not huge.
No.
Cases.
No.
Stacked right to the roof.
Right, so it wouldn't be an issue to have a, the D P W R D O spot, or would it be in the way?
It wouldn't be an issue to us. But, yeah, it's, it's not my shed, it's not my bags.
I think it would be great to get rid of the bags and get rid of the shed.
You can't get rid of the bags because we have to distribute them to towns we buy.
Do you really think they'd get rid of all the town's bags?
Moving them to the.
Getting it out of the town center.
And yes, I can talk to Diane tomorrow. I don't, I don't see why it would be an issue, but I may not know some secret fact of change, so that's fine.
I, I believe it's there for convenience. Yeah, they just don't like having to drive over to the D P W to get the bags.
I mean, we drive from town all day.
I mean, I can't, right, I can't imagine it. I mean, I can bring a box of the bag twice a week, and that's, that's hard.
And Paul comes to the D P W um on Fridays to clean my offices, so he's there, always grabbing.
Yeah, and like I said, I mean, because I'm all over the place all the time, and I sit at town.
What do you think more of your advice?
It's suitable for everybody to add one to the D P W. Charles on Fridays when he's down. I mean, they're still gonna have to help him stack all of it. Yeah, well, that's the act.
I wouldn't suggest trying to move, well, I have looked at it. I don't know. Pretty far.
I was gonna say, the shed, the center, I have some sort of the bottom.
Yeah. And just, just, I think you all are aware of this, but just to be fair, because it seems like maybe there was a confusion. My suggestion is to get rid of the visual eyesore that is the shed. So the reason we were wondering was in the shed, was so that we could remove the shed. So moving the bags and relocating them to the D P W or frankly, anywhere other than town center would allow us to remove that.
So we would have failed if we just moved the bags.
Yeah.
That's my point. Just my concerns, just there.
To get up, Brett, it's the shed and the yellow thingy.
It's the shed and the things that are keeping me from removing the shed. That's what's happening here.
But I expect to see one day that shed in the back of Brett's truck coming down the road.
I'm gonna be bringing along, I'm gonna be with the bags in it. It was Paul running after me. Oh, I know. Yeah, I said, I guess.
Yeah, you do. That might well, but. So you need to follow up with Board to help. Let's see what's, I will take that up in my morning. Okay. D P W facility expansion or preservation, ongoing. How's it going?
They have their initial meeting organized, and um our next meeting is scheduled for the eighteenth, I believe, at this point.
A lot of feasibility study, reconstruction of facility.
So I added this in, um, because during our last meeting, I mentioned that this was something that Rec uh was going to be meeting with C P C on to get sort of like uh, uh, temperature as far as seeking engineering information for um softball baseball fields. At traps. So, have us on, this, I think, gets to the whole, like, town facilities and, you know, wants and wants and needs and all, all this. Um, you know, if, if the Juanas um feasibility study and looking at that building is to happen, we need to identify where the softball baseball fields are gonna go. Um, and, um, because otherwise you're looking at a different location for the Juanas uh facility than at the beach and, like, when I have it at the beach, there just isn't, isn't that room, so. Um, well, the, those, the Juanas feasibility attracts, they're linked at the hip because without one, really don't have the other. If you don't move the baseball softball fields, you can't expand beyond the existing footprint.
That's kind of the point. Yeah, and I know, um, when I met with the Rec, um, we talked about opening into grants. And there was a grant last year for developing recreation foods and facilities. I don't know if there'll be another one. The deadline was July of last year, so whether or not the state does again, but I think we should pursue grants as well as anything. Because any time we can get some free money. And should, they should start looking. Yes, they should be looking for next year's grants, because like I said, mine, the one I saw, the deadline is July twenty ninth, twenty three, so. It's a lot of work. We couldn't ask that long.
Okay.
The gravel lot, we talked about that. Town Hall Park, we talked about. Water tank refresh.
Time Bond is actively working on the first phase of that, which is designing our pressure zones. This is one of the things we talked about. There was more than one facet to making this work. Our, our goal, our goal is not changed at all. Our goal is to be able to fill both of our town's capacity and to be able to um agitate that water in a manner that allows us to maintain um, our um coronation, most religion. So, and to do that, we have to do some initial studies around town to design our pressure zones. And Time Bond is actively working on this.
C O A van, we got that back yet?
Yes, it's back. However, what we found out was that um, in the sort of blacked out areas around the perimeter of the windshield, there was cracks. So now, and that's where water actually may have been coming. So, um, we've been in touch with um, uh, our insurance company and the windshield replacement company. We're waiting for confirmation of a date where we can just take it off so they can just come out and pop that out. You could hardly see it. The cracks were discovered when we brought it up to New Hampshire, and they had everything under their lights and running water. And they find, hey, your windshield's one at the very top, one at the bottom corner. We asked.
Defect when we received it? Was that, was it defective when we received?
Have no idea when it could have happened. No idea. There's no exterior chip that indicates that, like, um, like he was behind one of them, so it's all trucks. And a chip had cracked it. No idea. But, believe me, the thought of, well, hey, we received it, it could have been like this the first day.
Yeah.
Has entered on. Um, we're looking.
So now we're looking for a second.
So I put this in to start the conversation because one of the things, um, now with the building here, um, before we didn't need to transport people to the, to the center when it was bottom of, of millions. And, uh, all of you may have heard, uh, especially because it was most vocal last summer or this, just this open summer, about are we prioritizing medical rides or are we prioritizing trips to the um center, uh, the, the community center? And one of the things is that, uh, medical rides are still the priority, but we're taking thirteen passenger van off from doing other trips into Milford, into Nated, into Worcester. Even if we maintained the number of drivers we had, would it make sense to have them use a minivan, something that's more efficient? That doesn't have wear and tear. And maybe we can build up a volunteer um uh driving. So, throw that out there. Um, there's grants um through Mass Stop that do come up on an annual basis for uh purchasing vans uh that closed for uh twenty, uh, this year, twenty four. Anticipated opening up over the summer for F Y twenty five, but wanted to start that discussion, say, is this something um, that was a reasonable, Farroh, um, interim C O A director mentioned that um, uh, they acquired a minivan specifically for that purpose. Why have something that's inefficient on fire, gas, wear and tear, all to transport very often one person on a medical ride?
All right, comprehensive sidewalk.
So, uh, last discussion with the board was, the board seemed to be in favor of taking the plan that we have now and revisiting it after we have an engineering firm go through it with the town manager and myself and come up with a stronger game plan for recent middles or complete streets and other grants that are built. And that is my goal. I haven't done anything but it is at this point.
Just get a reconstruction. One forty roundabout tip project. When are they gonna have the public hearing?
They only identified early twenty twenty four. So one of the questions that I did have for the board was um, uh, to what extent the board would want to facilitate a discussion or um, I may, uh, unless the assistance, not only Dennis, but also Michael, and reaching out to uh, the people who attended our session to sort of do a once-over with the draft plans I sent out by email, bring it out uh, for people here, um, primarily focused on this center, just to get uh some comments in advance. Uh, Mass Stop did provide us a copy in advance at the seventy-five, so we can start to get some feedback. Um, so my, my first, first thought was, one, if the board wanted to, to facilitate that, great, we can do it as part of a meeting. Otherwise, I may just reach out to everyone and see as far as if there's a, I, like, a late night town halls open, invite people down, put it up on the screen, turn things off at the corner, just to get their feedback from the business owners who are most.
Yes.
That's the, that's, yeah. Key folks we want to talk to.
I'd like to see that, yeah, that stuff comes over, because they were really fired up.
Oh, yeah. So for a flexibility standpoint, if you're okay with it not being as part of the O S meeting, I'll schedule it for, doesn't mean you can't come.
Right.
Uh, but I can try to do that, you know, between uh five and six thirty, so that people can pop in, get their feedback and can. get their feedback and can capture that. So.
And we had the seventy five percent.
No, they're still working on it, but they gave us an excerpt for the set. So basically V F W down to actually playing.
Playing history?
Yep, this section they gave it to us. Okay.
Do you think it's that mixed?
I, I don't. There, there, if you go by their original schedule, it should have been shovel the ground. They haven't hit seventy five percent sign yet. So.
And then what calls about this?
Um, I think the complexity, it's a very large project too. And quite frankly, I think some of the feedback from the town, we challenged them. But if you want us, we didn't sit and just accept their initial or even second proposals. We continue to challenge and continue to challenge them to try to do the best we can.
I mean, I think they just.
At first, I mean, you know, I I feel so hockington today and it is just, I'm sorry, it's a sad. The center of Hockington and I don't want that. I, you know. It's horrible.
I will say, this section that we're talking about really goes from the garage, Orange Garage, to just across from the community center is where the most changes have occurred. Everything else, it it gets busy. I'm just, I'm just going to tell you upfront to make, be able to make accommodations for street parking. It gets busy.
I was amazed. I mean, I am very pleasantly surprised that they were able to get the parking in.
Well, that's the one thing that happened in Hockton because that one thirty five is so wide. Now it's so narrow. They had put these big sidewalk sidewalks. And then the sidewalk.
So they're maintaining complete streets. So you have sidewalks on both sides. You have bike lanes on both sides and pedestrian. There are, there are sections where you have combined use. Your sidewalk becomes ten feet wide and it's designed to accommodate bikes and pedestrians so that you're not carking as well. This is what I mean by the terminology. It gets busy.
Yeah.
So awful lot going on in the small area.
Well, I think we should teach out and so they have the answers. It would have taken them so long to get to seventy five percent.
I'm really surprised the amount of cooperation that we have received. It's been great. Really, they they really rolled up their sleeves from our initial conversations with them. There was quite initially, there was strong pushback, right? Like the following, these are their rules and they don't bend them for people.
When we had the last touch base meeting, I was fully expecting them to say, people in Boston want two bike lanes on both sides and.
I, yeah.
I was, I figured there was so much silence because that's what.
So I was, when they came back, I thought it was going to be.
They worked really hard and they pushed their engineers.
And I do know that also some of the property owners directly communicated to residents. For Adrian and his boss and that then after the.
Good. But there will be some combinations. And I've had some brief conversations with some of the residents in front of the country super. They're going to need to move the the right of way doesn't accommodate what they're looking to accomplish without moving that right of way line over another foot or so. And that's going to be that much closer to the front of the super building. And, you know, it's important that people are aware that there are going to be accommodations on both sides. You have to be in compromise. But I mean, if you want to have parking in front of your business, be prepared to have that sidewalk almost up against your building.
And on south system.
Some of that. This Mariner's property, we, I need to have a further conversation with him, but I've had an initial conversation with adjusting some of the curb cuts. You know, if you would minimize some of those curb cuts, we could increase parking. Is there where there's a curb cut, you can't park there. And he has two very large curb cuts, some of them. So obviously a great deal of it's very necessary, but perhaps not to the extent that it is. So these are the things the town manager is referring to. They have provided us a plan. We need to have further conversations with some of our residents, but it's great. It's an, it's an awful long way from where it's starting.
I think it's a long way and it's even if it takes a little bit longer getting it right is more important.
I'd rather it's slow and right. Yeah, me too. We can tell it's slow and up at seventy five. I'll say that. Well, I'll say it's slow, you know, then maybe you can get the middle down and everything else down there. Or that would be big, you know, so they can drag their feet all they want. It might be for it to us or us.
And help us with the Milford Street water and sewer extension.
Yes.
Right?
Uh, the tip project, as the town manager stated earlier, the tip project really doesn't conflict with our water and sewer. We're all in front of it.
Okay.
It's their other project that's going to conflict. And we have been coordinating with them. So they have a simple milliner overlay that goes from Elm Street all the way to the town line headed out of town. And originally they were going to be responsible for a hundred percent of that. And now they are kicking some of the responsibility of the final paving to the town for the section where our water and baseball will be located. Because we're making them stop from the other end and come towards us while we're standing here and heading towards them. So their timing is going to, it's going to be such that they're going to be able to get their, all of their stuff done, but they won't be able to pave the road while we're still putting infrastructure. So they said, that's fine if you pay it.
But that's not until they get. But that's not until they get to a hundred percent design.
No, that's the separate project. This is, uh, this is one that came out of the wood. They have two projects. They have a tip. They have a milliner overlay from Elm Street.
Good for us.
And they have the.
They could delete the middle.
We suggested that.
Yeah. Like don't go play in someone else's backyard and then come back.
Yeah. Whatever. Okay, pavement management.
We haven't updated our pavement management in some time. However, I think the last time I brought this up to the board, it was waiting to get past the tip project, the Park for that North Tip Project and whatnot, and finish up with our road paving so that we could have a new accreditation with the state. I wanted to have the original creator of our program is Beta. Beta is well known for their road management programs. I can tell you in all the other communities I've served, Beta created their road management. They're kind of the the big company on the block when it comes to these things. And I would like to have them come back in and update ours so that we could petition the state to include some of the new roads that we have taken over as town roads. But there are a couple of them that are still pending. Azalea is one. And I'm not sure that we finally set set summer circles. So that's ours now. Azalea, we still have problems there. And then we have the preserve of King Pond is going to become ours as well. So I was waiting for those to finish so I can include that, the mileage in our in the application. So we give an increase in our allotment. So probably, you know, probably in the fall, I'll be looking for to to update that program.
Municipal and residential wildflowers and meadow bylaws. I'm going. So when the bylaw encouraging wildflower meadow, vegetated guy looks on the face of open space.
Next. I'm good.
Well, then we have some complaints.
We have some complaints on summer circles specifically.
And some compliments.
Yes, and some.
Yes, it's not there. Absolutely. And one of the main things is with the nuisance bylaw, the nuisance bylaw is basically a camera. It's not a delicate tool. Vegetation grows up, people complain. We use that to get people to to mow their and maintain their their yard. But when you're dealing with trying to reintroduce wild, wildflower habitat, sort of have more of a meadow, what, we don't have anything that addresses that. Or even from an enforcement standpoint, establish the standard that then we can say, no, this is not a nuisance. This is something else. So staff had a meeting, what, and Brett was in attendance as a property owner. And we're sort of using this as an opportunity to provide some form of definition so that we can then evaluate maybe amending the nuisance bylaw by itself or at least having some sort of procedures. We are also doing research to see if there are similar files or what would be needed to put it to be put in place. There are many towns that have adopted statements basically saying we're a pollinator community, basically identifying that.
Can't maintain chances, let.
No, but I, and I was in Middleton, we had a petition that said Middleton look for town meeting to approve Littleton as a pollinator community. Boris Larkman supported it, town meeting authorized it. Everything from highway projects to other local projects. Where possible, we use pollinating flowers and plants to as part of common landscaping.
From there, it's always.
It's also used to be scanning.
Yes. And the municipal part of it is like, instead of having turf that the BPW maintains, if you invest a little bit more upfront, you don't have to be paid it. It's.
We were.
What flower happens?
And there used to be one by the playground before then we built that community center. There was a rain garden and it was supposed to be vegetated, so we have a pollinator plant. And it didn't really work out that way.
Can you get it okay?
But there's, there's not, it's here, sort of reading a few some of these things.
Habitat lots of solar. Top installation, first removal, move and bylaw.
Next. So there's no.
I don't think it's up. It's inclusionary zoning.
So that's something that actually the planning board, their most recent meeting ending the month of December, they reviewed the draft inclusionary zoning bylaw. I'll just true that I should have asked Mike for a copy to send to you to be aware of, to be drafted. My understanding, their next coming meeting, they're also going to be reviewing that. And their intent is to submit it to the annuals on meeting.
Does this have that M B T A?
No. This would be so that for every ten houses that get built, market REIT houses, one is. Or there's sort of like a catch by option and it needs to be high enough that it actually is worth it. See, always.
Either there or there is less than required.
And not, not like, oh, I'll give you fifty thousand dollars. It's got meaning. So that's something they're looking, looking at. I don't know what the ratio is. It's not possible for an updated current version of seven.
Us up in gas station pain. When you've been through that.
Is that the BP you're complaining also against?
BP?
BP. Which one do you think?
I assume it's BP, right? So well, well, if it is, I can tell you how to solve. There's, it's a franchise. He's probably in violation of his franchise agreement.
I'm just going to get a batter and a paintbrush.
But every, so I know people that are.
I'm going to give a local business owner.
But more than likely, it's supposed to be maintained under the franchise agreement because it shouldn't look like that being a national chain.
Great. No action at this time.
And I, so we showed my laptop.
You want a spotlight?
And the reason why I have, because this is just the current status. This is because also.
I think it's a good thing.
The, the knowledge.
Honestly, I, I think it's the right, like it's, I was going to say inactive or whatever, just like we need to know what we're not doing so that we're all the same agent.
Yeah.
They're all the same agent whatsoever.
So and part of this, part of this, I also just wanted to sort of say, you know, as part of E D C's plan for the upcoming year, coming up probably late spring, early summer, they want to start a process for developing a west of dent similar to what they for law and the stuff in the West.
Centerburg Rockaway. A street connection for us. Step out of that, what ones will be.
So I have, that was, that was something that E D C has also identified as a, they'd love to be able to do that. I put it in that M V P expression of interest to gauge what the state's receptability would be for something because it's at the tail end of that gravel law. So if you have to do all these things, stormwater management, capping, hey, what would be to to cross over? But it does tie in also that delineation work that would be being done. E D C. E D C wanted and engaged an engineer to sort of develop some concept plans, but you needed to do the delineation work.
You need to know where things were, where the flood.
When did they spend on doing?
I was talking with Michael about pulling together those specifications because that's, that's simple engineer. So I know he's pulling together those down.
I know not. I know that's very big.
Oh, well, we took pictures.
Good. That's a good call.
No, no.
Did you have to take pictures yet?
Oh, yeah. No, I'm not joking.
Pictures are perfect.
Over there because I.
That's all we hear. Yeah.
Last thought, I guess, two thousand eight.
That's also part of the E O I or the M V P conversation with the state, right?
Yeah. Just need to try to figure out how to get M B T A.
M B T A. Well, that was actually one of my questions. My honestly, kidding aside, is I don't see that on the list. I, the boards particularly, is that planning board or somebody?
But quite honestly, it is a community commitment. This is, if the state isn't a, sorry, I've been planning, people are you didn't get it. This is the town and this, it should be on there. Thank you for pointing.
This is how we should be done.
Uh, December twenty twenty five.
And that's going to come up pretty quick.
Yeah.
This one did. Yeah. Yeah. So it's, I, because I know when I was working on House of the Dutch, I think said a plan, who's going to create a committee. I know I asked Michael, I'm like, what's happening with that committee? And he goes, I am the committee. So I don't know. It most certainly should be said. He knows what he's doing.
Well, also, we did, one of the challenges, and we put, did put out a request for services to get a consultant to help with that. Um, I think because of the impending M B T A issue and the state funded a lot of like programs to study it, no consultants available within a timeframe. So literally the feedback was, um, I can't do it right now, but in six months, we should be able to be free to do it. So within the timeline for responding, we couldn't meet the timeline that that might laid out. So we need to revise that because literally some of the consulting firms are just.
Right, like the time was being taken.
Yeah, exactly. Which, well, yeah, had we nominated B, just because one of the things that we, Mike and I did talk about was Grafton did, is having a consultant do it. So just to just run it together. Yeah, the underlying why it's needed. It's all the same.
Yeah.
It's just looking at the locations and then standards.
Yeah.
Now I understand with water sewer.
It makes it easier for you to hit density and and small smother. I mean, yeah, we could, you know, out by the Hope Dale town line, you know, we could accommodate something there. But that's a little, little hard when you're looking at some of the objectives of that M B T A. Because we're saying, well, we're throwing, you might as well just be considered. Hope Dale like that.
Yeah.
So far removed from any of the resources downtown. Resources downtown, infrastructure as well. Um, but that's where that process will be able to identify because, um, we can achieve it by doing smaller infill. Uh, and coming up with one hundred and twenty five is not gonna be hard for us. Um. But identifying that road and having getting it past town meeting, that is what's gonna be. But yeah, I'll that's, I need to have that. Thank you.
And the next carnival of the VTA. We have that on there.
I I know, it's just not a high priority. It's something for us topic. I think it would be great to have a card in the back. The one that we used to have here.
Yeah. Here. Yeah. But would it be easier to to afford to buy it in a book because it's town home versus thirteen town home?
Yeah, I just think it's harder to get to. Like, I think like the fireworks, right? It's like that. Right, we use that that sort of practice field that they use for softball or whatever and. You know, like nobody messes with the football field and just because I think access wise, like if you're gonna set up a cornfield, it's probably harder to get to. Like, the field that's fielded. Anyway, I know it's a great.
And was that before COVID and like as far as like.
It was the COVID. Yeah, it it was their big fundraiser of the year.
Yeah.
And that's why when we put the community center there, there was. Uh, agreement to at least the private not to offset the money they were going to lose from the title.
Yeah.
Oh.
But also, it's a great community event, which is why it's.
It is.
Yeah, so, yeah. I have a couple of time to work. I think you thought you'd do it in the summer, you would be like, sure, the school.
I think, yeah, and I think it all just was like July, I just thought it was like to be. July.
I was June, I thought June.
The school was up, usually school was over.
The school wouldn't have to be up to do it if you're on tech.
Yeah, yeah.
But that one starts early and it's.
Is that true?
So versus the same, because they actually probably.
Yeah, we'd want to try to spread it. Spread it out from the fireworks, because that's a big community event at the same spot.
Right.
Yeah.
Just have to really, I mean, tech starts early. It's just. Something.
It's out there, it's out there.
Yeah.
So, um, I can, uh, you have a PDF or and I can send out the Excel version. Um, so I had a BTA, um. And the question I guess would be, would you want to then? Um, rank things from high, medium, low, or a, you know. One year, two year, three year. And then just, I can send you the Excel, you can rank it, and then I can just compare and. Yeah.
Timeline.
Yeah, okay.
Wants versus needs.
Well, that's.
Wants, when you buy a house, you get needs, wants and desires. That's.
Wow, so you want me to introduce to another column that is basically is the timeline, you know, priority, and then is this a need or?
Yeah, I think like the cardinal is the desire, you know, second to want or need, you know, um, true.
Well, I think the way that I've typically done these kinds of. Well, there's there's lots of different ways to do it, but I think the point is like, let's get some. Right, because they're sort of like, what are we actively doing, right? Like, so there's a backlog, if there's a backlog of things we want to do, right? So like, oh, yeah, we want to have a carnival like BBT, wouldn't that be great? We're not doing it, it's definitely not a dump, but there's like a box of stuff we're doing and there's a box of stuff that's in a backlog, like all this. No action at this time, that's a perfectly appropriate category for things to have, because then not doing it, trying to do everything once.
Right.
Right, so the more we can have this.
Through the center downtown here and getting that.
I think that's the biggest.
Yeah. To one forty and.
That's the biggest stuff. Yeah, those are the big things that are gonna change the. Yeah, and the one thing I sort of discretionary time is what we're talking about here, not big stuff.
Right.
And if it's on the list and it says no action at this time, then I'd have to text Joe about it.
Yeah, that hurt.
No, it's on the list, I don't have to ask about the people.
You just have to figure out, you know, please have a really cool spot, right? So you're gonna do the nighttime thing.
And seventy percent is for me to paint. What's walking?
We will, in instead of doing like some upright, the raison d'or of that, Brett's gonna be painting.
Mark my words, what's the date, January second?
Yeah.
Give me three hundred and sixty five.
Okay.
Okay.
Gonna hold you to it. All right. So next we have the twenty twenty four BOS meetings.
Good to me.
Looks fine for me.
Third.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
We will, um, I will be throwing out other, um, non-regular meetings. For example, um, been talking with popularity about having a super Saturday. Invite departments and, uh, people that rather sort of separating things out in multiple weeks. Um, uh, so, uh. Touch base with him about that. Then, of course, with town meeting, there may be the times that we need to have a session.
Do you understand what the budget conversation would be on, like, why are we doing that on the solving?
Um, so sometimes it ends up being convenience for, quite honestly, the the committee members. Uh, which.
Which committee members?
Right, but it depends because some people, yeah, it may be easier if they come in on a Tuesday night and they're already here. If there was a FinCom or a slot meeting versus.
I mean, that's, and the reason that, right, the reason I ask in all transparency is like, asking people to do something on Saturday.
So part of it really depends on your your budget process. So for example, FinCom, they go through, they go through a lot of detail, they like hearing the presentations. And then they like discussing. Um, uh, for for us, when we're trying to get an understanding and and. If it ends up being over consecutive moves, it may not be that much of an issue for for us because we're compartmentalized. Okay, the safety then will deal more with administration and more, uh, DBD, even sort of divide things up. Um, in some towns, there's more of a conversation back and forth between the Board's Lockman and Finance. Uh, Committee as relates to, uh, doing final meetings. And they use the early afternoon portion, so you have the the department that's coming in the morning and that's from noon time. For a couple hours, you're just going through a line on line and how to build things together. So. First, my first year here basically was already done. Last year, I know from my perspective, it felt like there could have been things that were done, could have been done better. And more information, so trying to also sort of learn from. Things that maybe could have been improved last year to make sure it's a little bit more streamlined. And also, we're not dealing with the governor because of the election, things were so delayed.
Yeah.
Um, here, we pretty much are gonna know, um, and talking with Kenny. The the town manager recommendation, we're gonna have that. Um. Uh, no later than February fifth, the board would be meeting February sixth. I, um, uh, would be getting into the board as well as Finance Committee to then start all those discussions. Because it also is essentially identifies the parameters for the schools as well. And because we know BBT amended up to regional school district, they'll. They'll take any money want, but we have priorities, we have needs, we have hard costs, fixed costs that aren't aren't changing either. So having the town major, uh, budget come out with then some of the requests that are, uh, being. Made from departments is is then helpful, so then as the Boris Lockman and Fin FinCom. You're both looking at does this final budget that then would be published in the warrant or in the Finance Committee report. Reflect all the priorities of the town and the balance needs.
Well, don't, if I'm a stabbing of all the department here, I can get the needs. The wants, we're not even gonna discuss. It's what they need and have to have until we know where the schools go.
And and that's one of the hard things.
I know. We're going to hear that until March or April.
No, and then that becomes a question on, because it's not that long ago, as as Dennis reminded us at the last meeting, where. We made some last minute decisions to cut some money going for pavement because of school, school reports. That sort of fell through and then we made adjustments at another town meeting, um. I'm hoping to be able to get a better idea earlier because the state will ask you to be providing guidance to school, uh, the schools earlier as well. On what they they could be looking for, uh, but that messaging of needs versus wants. I think that's, you know, important to be able to message to them as well, rather than having, um. So and then say, what can you give us?
Yeah.
It's like, well.
What do you need?
Yeah, if you wanted a, just a flat two percent increase, could do that every year. If we knew something was was consistent, sustainable, could easily do.
Right, and there's some models, right, that say like, hey, every you, the school's gonna get X percent of new revenue every year. Right, so whatever the increase is every year, they get a certain percent of it. I mean, it doesn't necessarily work.
Right, because, yeah, if it's word of age, you know, like, the, um, you know, free cash amendment was certified at a hundred and fifty six thousand dollars last year. Um.
Well, what was it? Oh, what was it for this year?
And sorry, I will, actually, no, I don't know what it was for this year. I was looking at the FY, uh, twenty three numbers. Um, so. For if if it was only us, that would be easy, because I know that that would be the guys, at least in, um, my former town. Um, because we've only dealt with one school district a year and one municipality. Here, it's a little bit of a challenge because almost anything requires an override through amendment. And it's just asking them, the district, is this the year you're going for it for both towns versus are you gonna try to sweep by? And they have an answer to that, yeah.
We did do about ten, four years.
Well, that. That's what, like, before COVID, they said, like, oh, we're gonna have to do this every five years. But COVID sort of extended that with all the supplemental federal funds that Ed Norrie didn't want to do it the first year she was in. She wanted to like, what's going on? And now they're dealing with significant capital requests. Is that the else they need?
But it isn't just them too, it's BBT. They have significant capital requests.
Yeah, just be.
Thursday's what we.
Yeah.
What there is. Okay. Where is it in BBT?
Uh, Superintendent Saws. Final for experiments.
Great. Now, we, the flag policy, can we wait until the next meeting?
You can.
Because there's a lot to read.
Yes.
You good with that?
I'll be with that because I can get a chance to.
We have a team for ages and.
Oh, it's it's a date today, you.
So just a a question, um, schedule's good?
Schedule's good, no. And then whatever you need in between.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I said, all was with Beta.
Yeah.
After an massage. Thank you, Mr. Westgate.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.